Before we get started, I wanted to put on the record that there's, we having problems with Before we get started, I wanted to put on the record that there's, we having problems with the sound system, so we're gonna try our best to talk loud. They took one of the the sound system, so we're gonna try our best to talk loud. They took one of the microphones microphones from up here, put down there, so if you would try to speak up as well, so from up here, put down there, so if you would try to speak up as well, so we can hear you, we can hear you, and we'll try to speak up so you can hear us. and we'll try to speak up so you can hear us.
So use the mic?
So use the mic?
Use the mic, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Just try to speak up a little bit louder, yes Use the mic, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Just try to speak up a little bit louder, yes ma'am. ma'am. No, we're, no, we're good. No, we're, no, we're good. Yeah, and make sure you press the button when you speak. Yeah, and make sure you press the button when you speak. I would like to call the regular scheduled Fairfield County Council meeting to order, I would like to call the regular scheduled Fairfield County Council meeting to order, Monday, October the 14th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, Winsboro, South Carolina. Monday, October the 14th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, Winsboro, South Carolina. If everyone would If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all. Thank you. Also want to put on the record that our county attorney had a prior engagement, Thank you. Also want to put on the record that our county attorney had a prior engagement, but he is on the phone, listening, and that way if we need anything from him, he is also but he is on the phone, listening, and that way if we need anything from him, he is also present to be able to speak. present to be able to speak. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
So move, second. So move, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, well, let me put this on the record. I received a phone call today that Seeing none, well, let me put this on the record. I received a phone call today that the Millenstem Charter School presentation, they could not make it tonight, and they're the Millenstem Charter School presentation, they could not make it tonight, and they're gonna try to reschedule, so I wanted to make everybody aware of that, that Millenstem, gonna try to reschedule, so I wanted to make everybody aware of that, that Millenstem, so if everybody is okay with the agenda, with Millenstem not being present tonight, so if everybody is okay with the agenda, with Millenstem not being present tonight, just put that out there. Everybody in favor of the agenda without the Millenstem Charter just put that out there. Everybody in favor of the agenda without the Millenstem Charter School? School? Everybody opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0. Next, we are down to the invocation, Everybody opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0. Next, we are down to the invocation, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Robinson.
Let us bow our head. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you for allowing us Let us bow our head. Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you for allowing us to to attend another Fairfield County Council meeting. We ask you to guide our mind, our attend another Fairfield County Council meeting. We ask you to guide our mind, our thoughts thoughts in this process. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. in this process. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes, regular Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes, regular meeting, September the 23rd, 2024. meeting, September the 23rd, 2024.
So move. So move.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0 on approval of minutes from the regular All those opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0 on approval of minutes from the regular meeting, September the 23rd, 2024. meeting, September the 23rd, 2024. Next, we are down to public presentations. Millenstem Next, we are down to public presentations. Millenstem will be here another time. Item will be here another time. Item B, Hoof and Paw presentation, Ms. Kathy Falk. B, Hoof and Paw presentation, Ms. Kathy Falk.
That one? Test? Okay, can you hear me? I can, I can speak louder, can you guys hear? That one? Test? Okay, can you hear me? I can, I can speak louder, can you guys hear? Probably better without the mic. Anyway, thank you, Council. We were, Hoof and Paw Probably better without the mic. Anyway, thank you, Council. We were, Hoof and Paw was invited to come here tonight to make this presentation of a donation that we give was invited to come here tonight to make this presentation of a donation that we give twice twice a year, and have been giving this donation for many, many years. We have been giving a year, and have been giving this donation for many, many years. We have been giving this amount since, well, since COVID. And like I said, we give it twice a year, but this amount since, well, since COVID. And like I said, we give it twice a year, but normally, we just go down to the animal shelter and present the check there. So it's wonderful normally, we just go down to the animal shelter and present the check there. So it's wonderful to be able to come here tonight and present it to the animal shelter on behalf of Hoof to be able to come here tonight and present it to the animal shelter on behalf of Hoof and Paw, so that, you know, I think a lot of, probably council, some council members and Paw, so that, you know, I think a lot of, probably council, some council members don't even know what Hoof and Paw does for the community, and, and certainly, a lot of don't even know what Hoof and Paw does for the community, and, and certainly, a lot of the community does not know. So it's really wonderful to be here, so thank you for that the community does not know. So it's really wonderful to be here, so thank you for that very, very much. It is a spay neuter donation, this particular donation is a spay neuter very, very much. It is a spay neuter donation, this particular donation is a spay neuter donation. Spay neuter is at the heart of every single thing that we do, because it donation. Spay neuter is at the heart of every single thing that we do, because it is so very important, and I think you all know that already, that that is our, that is so very important, and I think you all know that already, that that is our, that that is part of our mission, is that all animals, you know, many animals should be that is part of our mission, is that all animals, you know, many animals should be spayed or neutered. So, in the past, we have made this donation, it's a little different, spayed or neutered. So, in the past, we have made this donation, it's a little different, this, this particular donation, and we're gonna see how it works, and perhaps go forward this, this particular donation, and we're gonna see how it works, and perhaps go forward with it in the same manner, but this, this donation is going to basically be kind of with it in the same manner, but this, this donation is going to basically be kind of paid forward to rescues. So for example, when a rescue pulls an animal in the animal paid forward to rescues. So for example, when a rescue pulls an animal in the animal shelter, that animal sometimes has a pull fee, sometimes it does not. This will cover shelter, that animal sometimes has a pull fee, sometimes it does not. This will cover whatever the cost is to spay neuter that shelter-bound animal, in hopes that we will whatever the cost is to spay neuter that shelter-bound animal, in hopes that we will attract more pulls from rescues throughout, because right now, because our shelter, number attract more pulls from rescues throughout, because right now, because our shelter, number one, is a very, very small shelter with very little foot traffic, these animals, shelter, one, is a very, very small shelter with very little foot traffic, these animals, shelter, rescues are their lifeline. It is the only way that all of these animals, the majority rescues are their lifeline. It is the only way that all of these animals, the majority of them, get out. So, we're in hopes that in doing, paying it forward to these rescues of them, get out. So, we're in hopes that in doing, paying it forward to these rescues is going to attract more rescues, being able to come in and rescue some of our dogs that is going to attract more rescues, being able to come in and rescue some of our dogs that are in our shelter. So, on behalf of Hoof and Paw, I would like to present this donation, are in our shelter. So, on behalf of Hoof and Paw, I would like to present this donation, if Joanne, Ms. Shaw, would come up, and I've got some Hoof and Paw members that here tonight if Joanne, Ms. Shaw, would come up, and I've got some Hoof and Paw members that here tonight that would like to join us in, in the presentation of this donation, so hang on just a minute. that would like to join us in, in the presentation of this donation, so hang on just a minute.
Come on, ladies. So, this is a donation of $7,250. That's going to... Come on, ladies. So, this is a donation of $7,250. That's going to... That's a donation. That's a donation. And this is a, if cats want to join us, we can show them off to have. So this donation And this is a, if cats want to join us, we can show them off to have. So this donation is going to spay neuter, at least, depending on the cost, it's gonna spay neuter at least is going to spay neuter, at least, depending on the cost, it's gonna spay neuter at least 100 shelter-bound animals, and I want to be clear about that, this is a donation that 100 shelter-bound animals, and I want to be clear about that, this is a donation that is for shelter-bound animals. The Hoof and Paw also donated to the Casa, which is for is for shelter-bound animals. The Hoof and Paw also donated to the Casa, which is for community animals. So the myth of community, see the Casa for communities spay neuter, community animals. So the myth of community, see the Casa for communities spay neuter, as, as, like I said, this is a spay neuter donation for shelter-bound animals, and I as, as, like I said, this is a spay neuter donation for shelter-bound animals, and I want to thank one more thing, I want to thank all of our wonderful, wonderful shelter workers want to thank one more thing, I want to thank all of our wonderful, wonderful shelter workers for doing the COVID talk that they did, I want to thank all the volunteers, and I want for doing the COVID talk that they did, I want to thank all the volunteers, and I want to thank all of the Hoof and Paw donors, because without you, this can't happen. So thank to thank all of the Hoof and Paw donors, because without you, this can't happen. So thank you to our donors, I want to thank everybody who does work that you get in council, and you to our donors, I want to thank everybody who does work that you get in council, and these guys right here are the Hoof and Paw members, and, um, okay, we get it. these guys right here are the Hoof and Paw members, and, um, okay, we get it.
Next, we are down to item C, new EMS equipment. Tim Martin, the director of EMS for Fairfield Next, we are down to item C, new EMS equipment. Tim Martin, the director of EMS for Fairfield County. County.
Good evening, council. Good evening, the council, county administration, and citizens Good evening, council. Good evening, the council, county administration, and citizens of Fairfield County. Thank y'all for having us here tonight to introduce this new equipment. of Fairfield County. Thank y'all for having us here tonight to introduce this new equipment. We're pleased to announce the recent addition of the new LifePak 35 to our equipment here We're pleased to announce the recent addition of the new LifePak 35 to our equipment here in Fairfield County. This device is made by Stryker, this is their newest generation. in Fairfield County. This device is made by Stryker, this is their newest generation. This cardiac monitor is unlike anything out there in this country. We're the first EMS This cardiac monitor is unlike anything out there in this country. We're the first EMS agency here in South Carolina to fully implement this cardiac monitor. That just speaks volumes agency here in South Carolina to fully implement this cardiac monitor. That just speaks volumes as to the support of council, support of the citizens, and our staff to work very hard as to the support of council, support of the citizens, and our staff to work very hard to put forth the best technology and the best care we can for our citizens. This technology to put forth the best technology and the best care we can for our citizens. This technology was made, again, available because of all of our support that we have, because our goal was made, again, available because of all of our support that we have, because our goal was very simple, to do the very best for Fairfield County. This technology will allow was very simple, to do the very best for Fairfield County. This technology will allow us to identify heart attacks much faster and with much more accuracy. As we know, heart us to identify heart attacks much faster and with much more accuracy. As we know, heart disease is the leading cause of death here in South Carolina. The latest numbers in disease is the leading cause of death here in South Carolina. The latest numbers in 2020 showed that 11,385 South Carolinians died because of heart disease. We are 8.8% 2020 showed that 11,385 South Carolinians died because of heart disease. We are 8.8% higher than the national average. This technology will now give us data on the heart in a way higher than the national average. This technology will now give us data on the heart in a way that we've never seen before. I've been involved in EMS for going on 30 years, and this is that we've never seen before. I've been involved in EMS for going on 30 years, and this is the first time I've ever seen something that I will say is a huge game changer. the first time I've ever seen something that I will say is a huge game changer. This tech, this new technology gives us what we call this STJ Insight, not to bore you This tech, this new technology gives us what we call this STJ Insight, not to bore you with the details. This will allow our providers to be able to see areas of the heart that's with the details. This will allow our providers to be able to see areas of the heart that's being affected, and I'm... being affected, and I'm...
Can we ask quit?
When, when I came up there, didn't you say that you could tell which part of the heart was having the heart attack?
Yes.
You hadn't got there yet?
Yep, so here on the screen, you can see against.
How many, how many of these units do you have?
Yep, so now.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Did you say that Blair was done 10% fully and 17% partially? So that means that out there in the bushes where I am, 27% of the time last month, we had somebody out there. And you'd have had one of those things out there if somebody had been having a heart attack while that 27% of the time was going on?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Thank you. That's great, thank you so much. And I do appreciate your, what, do you think the other counties are gonna want to come see how this works, or?
Yes, we've already got several people have reached out to us because they've seen us with the help of Mr. Stevens. We really made a big push out in the, to, out, oh, I'm not bringing this moment, out in, to get this information out in the news and stuff, because we wanted to highlight this, because this is something very, we're interested in this.
Have you had this on WIS or something like that?
It was on WIS and on Watch Box, um, this month.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Martin, um, you know, technology's always changing, but what is the estimated life on this type of technology?
I have another question. How much did one of them cost? Just one. And I got another question, I'm sorry. So you were talking about the ambulances, did, did we get some, did we order some more ambulances? Don't we?
There were three on the work, but they've been over, well over here, and they will not be here until, then it's 25, 26.
Did we put a new back on a chassis? Did we do that?
We're doing that process now, getting that one done through the funding that y'all made, this month.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say, yeah, it sounds like y'all are doing a great job and we really appreciate it. You're improving a lot of things and good, that's great for everybody, thank you.
I'm sorry, I got one more question. So how, how is your, are your, are all your spots filled?
Turn your mic back.
Oh, no, our, um, we're still not fully staffed, um, but we kind of get creative with our staffing, um, with the, we do have openings, but we also are not just accepting anybody and everybody. We're trying to build a culture here in Fairfield County that is where people want to be here and, and give their, um, give their all, not here to collect a paycheck. And we won't, we feel like our citizens deserve that. And so we're, we're selective on who we bring in. But currently, we're down to five openings, um, which last year at this time, it was 17 openings.
Mr. Martin, we appreciate what you do for Fairfield County. I'll say this, I've, I've seen you several times outside of work, outside of these chambers, with you and, and your family, like this weekend, I, I ran into you and you're always a presentable person and a nice family, and just wanted to put that out there as well.
Thank you, Chairman.
I also want to compliment your staff also. I have an elderly mom and we've had to call your service, for your services on several occasions, and each time, um, your staff was very professional, um, kind, and, and, um, I just want them, want them to know, we really do appreciate them.
I will definitely.
And you also.
I will definitely pass that along.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we are down to the first public comment session. And would, and when the speaker comes up, if you wouldn't mind mashing the button on the microphone and probably just leaving it on until the end of all the speakers, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, Don Goldbach.
Hello? Is that good? Good evening, Don Goldbach, District Two. First of all, Mr. Martin, congratulations on securing some state-of-the-art equipment as the first county in South Carolina, I think that's awesome. And congratulations on the significant reduction in response times with you and your crew. And thank you very much for your service, really appreciate that. Uh, and thank you, council, for approving the funding for that technology. That's, um, that's a great example of really nice progress, so thank you. Um, second thing regarding some new, some, some new investment is the justice, if I can find the right wording here, Justice Assistance Grant that is on the agenda for an action item. And I guess I'd like to thank you in advance for what I expect would be an approval for that grant to be spent. Uh, there was no information available when we got the agenda for this meeting, but I understand it's for some new computers for our sheriff's office. And I guess my only question would be, you know, what process did we go through to make sure that that was, you know, the best place to spend that money? But I'm sure there was some process, but thank you again for, um, in advance for the expected approval of that grant. And lastly, I would like to talk about the, uh, the water treat, wastewater treatment system. And I just have one request regarding that. Uh, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, is making available, um, funding for water and wastewater projects to municipalities, governments, counties, and so forth. And the act is called the, the Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. Now, I know dealing with the federal government can be a bureaucratic nightmare, but, uh, I would just like to know if this has been looked into as a possible funding source for our wastewater treatment system? And, um, if so, what was the result of the analysis, whether it's something we should pursue? And if not, if there would, would be plans to actually set, uh, submit a letter of interest? It's like a 28-page form, but the questions, there's like two questions a page, it's not, it doesn't look that bad, but anyway. So I'd like to hear whether or not that was, uh, investigated as part of our wastewater treatment project. Thank you for your time.
Ann Carrero.
Good evening, Ann Carrero, District Two. Thank you, Kevin Thomas, uh, for what he's done with the charter school, and on his behalf, I would like to address that while charter schools and traditional public schools both receive public funding, they operate differently in key ways. Charter schools have greater flexibility in their operations and their curriculum. They operate on a contract charter that outlines the school's mission, programs, goals, and assessment methods. Our schools adhere to state education standards, but charter schools have the freedom to be much more innovative in the curriculum and teaching methods they use to ensure learning. They are more accountable because they must achieve specific academic results and uphold the promises outlined in their charters while providing a more personalized learning experience. Due to their autonomy, they can adapt curriculum and teaching methods to meet students' unique needs and use their resources more efficiently and direct more of their funding to support teaching and learning rather than centralized overhead costs. All stakeholders benefit from charter schools. For our teachers, innovation allows them to experiment with diverse methods and materials, resulting in a creative and fulfilling teaching experience in their classrooms. What a wonderful addition of choice to our community. And I want to thank Kathy Falk for all the hard work she does and what she brings to the table, that is a significant amount for our animal shelter. And seeing that there's been so much controversy over the new animal ordinance and with speaking with many of our constituents on that, the most mentioned concern is that we have a current animal ordinance that is not consistently followed, implemented, nor enforced. People believe that the new proposal will fall, fall under the same ineffectiveness and has the potential to be used as a tool to target innocent individuals who are responsible animal owners. So we still, still do have some work to do on that and hopefully we can all do it together. And Tim Martin, that was amazing, thank you so much. To see the ability of our trained professionals to obtain an accurate EKG en route to the hospital and under other circumstances is invaluable and life-saving. The EMS equipment was outdated, and this upgrade gives people a reason to feel that their health concerns are being taken seriously, so the council is to be commended for that. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all emergency response crews from linemen, fire service, law enforcement, and healthcare services during our last weather event, too. You are all invaluable to our fabric of community. Also, the Rock Around the Clock event was so well-received, and Sergeant Thompson was an invaluable law enforcement presence, he deserves accolades for that, as do all the others who helped make the event safe for all. The Justice Assistance Grant that we were talking about is a grant, grants are not real easy to write, we know that, and they have time constraints, but they will keep a rule of law, keep our county safe, and protect civil rights. My love for community runs deep, so thank you for this very informative session this evening.
Randy Bright.
Randy, Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Assume you can hear me. It's good to see the joint wastewater program on tonight's agenda. My pitch tonight, in part, we need lots of updates as we move forward with a new sewer project. First of all, those updates should begin with, by the county posting the latest report from the Joint Water Sewer Committee, and I'm talking about the PER, Preliminary Engineering Report. It's a 278-page report that outlines the importance of us expanding our wastewater treatment capacity. In fact, it doesn't just outline the importance, it basically, in the introduction, says this is an imperative, is to get this thing done and done right if we're going to move forward with our economic development. The report in itself has lots of moving parts. It's got 10 major options to choose from, of different variety of processes. It's got one plan, long-range plan, that costs an estimated $101 million over the period of years. It's got several different phases to phase in, short-term, medium-term, long-term, that's where this $101 million process estimation comes in. It's got 278 pages of important data, important underlying causes and effects if we don't move forward. In fact, the megasite was designed to put this, was designed to have such a water sewer capacity as outlined in this report. It is imperative that we also give updates, regular updates on a quarterly basis because of the enormous cost, because of the enormous impact it will have on us. Those regular updates should occur, should occur quarterly and allow for citizens' questions all at a town hall. It's that big, it's the biggest thing to ever hit Fairfield County, we hope, we wish, we pray. We're gonna make it happen if we follow through with good updates, keeping the people, the populace informed and follow through. I realize it's, it's joint water, but the county is the backbone of it. It's also important to keep us updated on how much money we have in the piggy bank, which right now stands at $47 million. That may or may not be enough, but we need to be, keep informed to ensure it is so we can move forward, so that Fairfield can move forward. Thank you for having it on the agenda tonight, look forward to continual updates on this so-major project, thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to public hearings. A application and expenditure for the 2024 JAG Justice Assistance Grant funds. At this public hearing, Fairfield County will provide information concerning the proposed use of the funds in an identified program-purpose area. We will open this public hearing at 6:44 PM. Does anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. I want to thank you for having this on the agenda also, and I also want to thank anybody that's been involved in this, as I understand it, the party that it's going to be affected most was included in the decision-making process, and that's the right way to do things, that the experts gets who it's gonna impact. And I also would like to, um, thank those that provided some extra details on this so that we can actually analyze this beforehand, and that's something that the county has done a really good job in listening to earlier concerns of citizens, is, is posting their, uh, the details on the ordinances and hearings, and I thank you for that, Ms. Roberts particularly that gets the job done there. And, uh, thank you for having this on the agenda, and I'd like to hear further details, but as everything that I understand so far, it was done right, done the way it's supposed to be. Last question, do we or do we not have a dedicated grants writer? Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, we will close this public hearing at 6:46 PM. Number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders, none. 10 board and commission minutes, none. 11 board and commission appointments, none. 12 old business, none. 13 new business, JAG grant approval, and this is an action item. I will ask Mr. Killian to speak on it, and if Chief Deputy Douglas wants to come forward to speak on it as well, you're welcome, you're welcome to do so.
I'll give it a shot, and Brad can fill in the details, but I think between our speakers tonight, we pretty much know, uh, what this grant's all about. It's an annual formula grant that comes from the Bureau of Justice, um, Justice Assistance Grant. We are eligible, Fairfield County is eligible for $10,765. We are eligible, Fairfield County is eligible, for $10,765. Sheriff's Department is asking to buy five ruggedized laptops for deputies in the field. The quote that was provided to you this afternoon is $11,170. So if I do my math right, we'll need to come up with about $405 to complete the purchase, but I'll let Brad talk about the specifics of what the computers will be doing.
Yeah, these are just, everybody knows computers, you know, they're obsolete after a couple of years. We've had some in some patrol cars for a while, and they're actually called, I think, rugged books. It's kind of a little more durable, they've got the rubber on the outside, it makes them a little more durable for our patrol guys to use, but we're looking to use this grant money to replace some of these older outdated computers that we're having issues with and they aren't quite working right. So that is what we propose to use that money for.
All right, this is, thank you, Chief Deputy and Mr. Killian. If there's no questions, this is an action item, all in favor of, oh, sorry.
All right, so moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, let the record reflect seven zero. That item is approved. Number fourteen, county administrators' report, Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System update. Mr. Killian.
Mr. Chairman, this may specifically might have been, should have been more about the Winsborough Connector Project, where we made some pretty good progress on the process. We're getting ready to open the bids on the connector project. One of the key things, and that's one of the reasons we have Mr. Morgan on the phone, and I'm going to put him on speaker, and hopefully everybody will be able to hear him in just a second. One of the things you have to have in place are the easements. You have to have the easement secured for all the project before Rural Infrastructure Authority will let you bid the project. We do have a bid date, and the advertisement was posted on October 8th last week, but I'm going to let Mr. Morgan tell you a little bit about the easement process and what that entails and where we are with that. Tommy, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. Administrator, members of the council. I'm making sure that everybody can hear my communications at this point. All right, good deal. I think we've got good comms here, and I appreciate everybody's understanding. I'm currently out of town in Austin, Texas, attending the National Conference of the State Legislatures with my wife, so we'll try to do what we can to bring some money back to Fairfield County from this particular conference. That being said, we have before this evening an update on the easement acquisition part of the Winsborough Connector Project. Everybody's pretty aware what that Winsborough Connector Project's all about, as a part of the overall and overarching project that deals with the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System and bringing that entirety of that system online. As Mr. Killian has pointed out, we are in the process of getting the easements that are necessary to put the pipes in place, basically to allow for the underground sewer system to be put into where it needs to be, so on and so forth. And there are certain things that we have to do. First and foremost, we have to inquire based upon the majority of the properties, have to get easements to allow for the pipes to be put onto those particular properties all across the various, the routing of the system. So we have reached out, we have used consultants, and have done a very, very good job of trying to get the easements, short of having to go through the condemnation process. What that means is the county has the power of eminent domain, so they can use their sovereignty to acquire property by virtue of being the sovereign, being the government, so on and so forth. But we have tried and have done a very good job of reaching out to the property owners that are impacted upon this system to get their acquiescence, in other words, get their agreement to allow us to do this without having to go through that process. So we have done that, we have communicated with commercial property owners such as Element, we've communicated with personal property owners, and we've done a good job of getting the majority of the parcels that are affected by the project, in other words, where the pipes will be laid underground, so on and so forth. There are about four parcels of property, three different parcel owners, that we are now subsequently, kind of like, reached an impasse. In other words, we've reached out to them, we've contacted them, we have talked to them, and have not been able to get their voluntary cooperation. So what we have done is exercised the power, again, of the county, as long as the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System, and have initiated the condemnation proceedings. That was the legal term that will allow the county to acquire this property, and it's not the entirety of the property, it's just the easement area for each one of these particular parcels that are subject to where the line is going to go. And because we have initiated that, we've kind of gone through the process and reached out and voluntarily gotten the other parcels to agree with us and sign the necessary easements and documents. As Mr. Killian has indicated, the RIA, the Rural Infrastructure Authority, they have viewed the county's progress, they've viewed the joint water system progress and said, hey, y'all are going in the right direction, you're doing what needs to be done. So they have authorized the bids and issued the bid to allow contractors to go ahead and bid and say they are the person, they are the company that can most efficiently and economically go forward with this particular project. So that was a very key and critical moment as it relates to this overarching system, this overarching project. So we're pretty pleased to say that we've made the necessary progress. There was very compressed timelines for these type of projects. They normally take months and years, but we were able to expedite the process, move this forward quicker than most, in all honesty and frank, and frankfulness, but we have met the deadlines. RIA has checked everything off, said y'all are good to go forward. The project is being in the process of being let, in other words, it's out to bid, and so it is moving forward in the appropriate timeline, meaning the grants that the county and the water system have applied for are still in play, meaning the monies are there. We have not lost those funds, so we're in a good space to go forward. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, saying, hey, we're in a good spot at this point in time, we're doing everything that needs to be done, and we'll answer any questions that anybody may have at this point.
I just want to be clear, did you say the ones that were holding out when, went forward with the condemnation, then they agreed at that point? Is that what you said?
Tommy, did you hear that?
Yeah, so Mr. Ruth, here's what we've got, Mr. Ruth, that there are certain parcels that have not responded to our initial outreach, and we have had multiple instances where we have reached out to the parcel of the property owners. We've sent letters, we've had individuals go out, we've had appraisals prepared that say that this is, in our opinion, the amount of consideration that the easement would be worth. So in other words, if we're going to take this particular line and we're going to place it on your property, the county feels it's worth X number of dollars. And so we have had multiple instances where we've reached out to property owners, and again, the majority have communicated with us, we've worked with them, we've been able to establish a fair value. In certain instances, those property owners have not, which is their right to do so, but what we have done is we have followed all the necessary laws and rules as it relates to the condemnation, and we've said, okay, fine, we've tried to work with you. So at this point in time, we have initiated the legal proceedings. So condemnation is basically a lawsuit that allows for the county, once it initiates the lawsuit, based upon certain deadlines and timelines, then if they do not get a response from the property owner, they can turn around and deposit funds, the, what we believe, based upon our appraisal, the amount that the easement is worth, into the court, and then that allows, at that point in time, for the county and the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System to have access to that property as needed in order to be able to perform the work in installing the lines on that property. So it's a process, it's a legal process, and 23-2-10-exet that allows for that to go forward, but we have done that. And again, overwhelmingly, the property owners have responded, we've been in communication, we've done a very good job of reaching out to these owners. Some of them have said, well, we have concerns, for example, about access across our driveways, and we've made sure that we can do that. Some of our commercial property owners wanted to make sure we do not impact their commercial businesses, their operations. Clearly, we don't want to, for example, try to cut a ditch and it prevents people from accessing their commercial property. We don't want to do that. We're working with all the property owners, it's been a good process so far, and it's been a good result. There's just a few, and it just honestly, it happens in every type of these projects for various reasons, and it's just we can't get everything done in time with regards to a negotiated settlement, shall you say? So we're having to initiate the condemnation because that starts the clock for the county and the Fairfield Joint Water Sewer System to be able to initiate construction. And in other words, if we wait too long, if we don't start that process, then we may fall behind the timelines that the state, South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority has said, you need to get this done by this date and this timeline, otherwise you don't get the funds. So that's where we are. So in these instances, and we've let them know, hey, we're still willing to talk to these individual property owners to try to resolve things, but we have to start this condemnation process because the state says if you don't meet these deadlines, this project may lose funding. So we don't obviously want to do that, we just can't wait forever to kind of work together to try to resolve this, but we've started the process, and we've still reached out and said, hey, by the way, if you want to talk, we'll try to do everything we can to resolve this Florida litigation. So that's where we are, and hopefully that answered a question, Mr. Ruth.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now we are down to... Clerk, the council's report, none. 16 county council time. Any council members wish to be heard? Vice Chair, Mr. Gilbert.
Yes, I'd like to ask Mr. Killian if you would give us a note day on the FEMA program?
Yes, sir. Of course, last Friday, I think, we got our final determination on the individual assistance from FEMA. We already had our public assistance determination a few days prior to that, so Fairfield has now been fully qualified for both public assistance and individual assistance. We'll be getting information out, I think Mr. Stevens has already put some out on our social media. I know it's on the South Carolina Emergency Management Division's website about people, what the process they need to go through to be able to get individual assistance. I found out this afternoon that we've already had over 600 individuals in Fairfield County apply for the individual assistance. Most of that was done online, but some was done by telephone as well. So folks are eligible to apply for FEMA to go through that process. Ms. McGriff is in the process of trying to set up a disaster recovery center here in Fairfield. FEMA has to approve the location, we've submitted a couple of places for them to consider. Then they will send individuals here for folks to be able to visit personally with, when they get set up. Hopefully that'll be done late this week, early next week, but sometime soon, we'll have that DRC set up for folks to come and actually visit with FEMA representatives and fill out the applications in person. So I think we've got everything pretty much in place for our citizens to come and find out what they can and cannot receive back from FEMA. A lot of it is tied to what is insured and not insured. If people have insurance, the FEMA necessarily probably won't respond to that, but if insurance denies a particular claim, then they may be eligible for some of that individual assistance. And I know of situations where people lost food, that there's an allowance for food to be replaced. It goes without saying, structures that got hit by trees or things like that. Typically, trees that just fall on the ground and don't hit anything but the ground aren't going to get much help with. I have 12 in my yard that I'm not getting any help with right now, so I understand how that process works. But for the most part, we have everything in place, and we'll be getting more information out to the citizens so that they can figure out how to apply with FEMA for both IA and the public assistance is for governmental reimbursement for clearing the streets and, you know, doing the things that we had to do to respond to the initial hours after the, after the event. And if I may, I'd like to take a few minutes to thank, I'm going to leave, let me just thank everybody, because first of all, these kind of events take a lot of response. In a rural county like ours, we don't have the same kind of staffing that a big county has. Ms. McGriff did a great job in coordinating the event and the response to the event. Our EMS, our volunteer fire departments, Chief Webb, first responders, you name it, everybody, sheriff's department, I can't say enough about what they had to deal with. I've, I've had the opportunity over my short career to work Hurricane Hugo, I've also worked a train wreck, I've also worked an ice storm, I've also worked several other different kinds of disasters that really impacted people's lives, and I think our folks did a great job responding to, to the event here. I know the western part of the county got hit probably harder than, than some other parts of the county, but every part of our county felt it, and I think our folks responded in a very gallant way to be able to provide our citizens the help they needed during the time. So I hope that answered your question.
It did. I also, I also want to thank the individuals and the citizens that volunteered their services and time also, because there were a lot of needs and a lot of people stepped up to the plate, and I think that's where Fairfield County came together and really just did a fantastic job.
Yes, I too would like to certainly thank the first responders, all of the workers who were with electric companies, and all of those who were simply regular citizens that went out to remove trees and all of those kinds of things from the road. Western Fairfield certainly had a very difficult time with electricity being out as many as six and almost seven days, and the feeding of those people was really very, very nicely done by the local groups and organizations and the sheriff department and all of those who actually provided food and other kinds of things and really worked very hard to make sure that everyone was made as comfortable as possible. You know, we weren't able to make everyone comfortable really, but as comfortable as possible. I would like to mention one of the things that maybe FEMA does and maybe something that we can look into. I know that on the lakeside, there were a number of instances where trees were lodged in people's docks and on people's yards and other things. I don't know if with FEMA, there's an opportunity to get some kind of apparatus, you know, some of the various access areas. Duke has already agreed to put dumpsters at two sites here in Fairfield County. It would be Watery Access Area and Molly Creek, that they'll put dumpsters, so if there is some way that we can check with FEMA to see if we might be able to get something that would help to dislodge those things and bring them to one of, one or both of those sites.
Yeah. Mr. Killian, is Tommy still on the phone? I don't want to ask him another question, though. I was going, I was going to pick it, no, I just want to thank you for all that information, but I was also, I was going to ask you another question, but I'm not, because I was going to tell everybody I had something else to say, but I wouldn't go give a dissertation like you did there then. I'm just picking at you, I appreciate you. Anyway, as far as what I want to talk about just for a second was the animal ordinance. And so I've talked, there's three of us on the committee, and we've discussed this, and this has been going on quite some time, but we really want to get it right as best we can. So the consensus is, and we got to get approval from our attorney, and maybe in the next few weeks, we can move forward if this, if this works out, is to form an ad hoc committee from citizens in the community, and how we go about selecting those, we don't know yet, but that's where, that's the direction that I think we're heading, and so, and I think all the council... all the council is probably gonna go along with that as well. So just wanted to give you an update on that and that's where we're heading. Don't know any more details yet, but that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to piggyback off Mr. Killian and Mr. Gilbert as well. I think it was last week when the storm hit, you know, Fairfield County citizens really came together. I happened to run across the corner, Corner Hill. I think he somehow could procure a truckload of water from Walmart, so, and I'm definitely thankful for him for doing that and everyone from the Sheriff's Department, EMS, let me see, it was local volunteer firefighters that came out and helped. I looked, did most of picture taken, but it was definitely a great thing for, for the county. Secondly, Mr. Killian, while we're talking, could we look into, I know we were supposed to do it, I see the chief up there, it was supposed to be in a plot of land identified for you guys for training. I'm not sure where we are with that.
We do need to bring that back. We've, we've talked, you're talking about the firing range?
That's correct.
Yeah, we, we have, we have identified a piece of a parcel that the county owns that is probably not suitable for economic development any longer. That was the property that we were talking about and I'm not sure that it's, the Department of Commerce is actually marketing that particular property anymore either.
Got you.
But we need to bring that back off the back burner and get that started again so we can bring something to you. We'll do that.
Okay. And secondly, I know, I think it was a couple of weeks the county was, county employees were notified of a breach. And just to let everybody know, I'm not exempt from that breach. I received a letter from the IRS saying that one of my constituents up here trying to file taxes on me, I don't know which one it was. But, but you're not getting anything, I can tell you that.
Yeah, no, that was, that was the first step we took.
You're not getting anything.
That was the first step we took was the IRS flagged every one of the ones that, that were compromised. So anything that comes in, even if you do it legitimately, you're probably gonna get a response from the IRS and argue who you say you are.
That's exactly what I received, so. I just wanted to remind the, or can we remind the employees to just be vigilant with that and keep an eye out?
We'll do that, we'll send them a reminder and more.
Oh, one more thing I forgot, I think Peggy, I forgot what it was, but go ahead, I'll let you talk now.
Okay, so anyway, I just wanted to ask this. Before this happened, did we have a emergency plan in place? Like, okay, you go here, you go here, you do this, you do this. Do we have one, did we have one in place? And can, if we didn't have one in place, can we get one in place?
Every county is required to have an all-hazard emergency operations plan.
So we had one in place?
We have one. Now, that doesn't mean that it addresses every particular instance or something that could happen, but you're required by state emergency management division to have an all has, what they call an all-hazards plan to respond to. I mentioned all of those hurricanes, tornadoes, train wrecks, nuclear releases, whatever. You're supposed to have that in place and we do have one in place. Does it need to be updated? Maybe. I don't know when the, the last update was done. It's required to be updated occasionally, but Ms. McGriff, that's what your emergency management division does. They do more planning than responding, to be perfectly honest with you. They have to try to coordinate all the resources that are needed when you have an event like this because frankly, just about any county outpaced its resources before the scene, before the night was over with. So they're always looking for other resources. That's why all the co-ops brought in folks from outside to get systems built back up. But yes, we do have an EOP, but it probably, I don't know when the last time it was updated, but it probably wasn't that long ago because you're required, EMD requires you to do it every so often and you have to sign off on it and return it, but I can check on it. But we've got one.
I fortunately was able to go to one of those trainings, probably about a year or so. It was a fantastic event, yeah. So the next one we have, I would suggest the ones that's on the board, make sure you go to it because it was pulling on.
Yeah, okay. So, oh, let me see, the IRS standing, do you have an update on that? Have we gotten anything back on that?
I know that the orders have submitted the paperwork for the three years still in question, but they have not gotten a response yet. I've seen the, the letters and all the legal citations and case they've made for that. I don't know how long it takes IRS to do it, but they have not responded yet.
Okay. And I had a person that wanted to know about the Black Stock Park sign. Have you made any progress on the sign for Black Stock Park?
I'll have to check with the director, but he was gonna make it happen. I just don't know whether he's gotten it done yet or not.
Okay. All right, I think that she was maybe wanting a little.
Event?
Event.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we can do that.
Because it was her dad, okay. And the wastewater treatment act that Mr. Gobach brought up, did we apply for that or can we apply for it or?
You have to have a specific project in mind. I have checked with the COG. There is a, and it's a good way to go. The COG is suggesting we do that because particularly the Fairfield joint water and sewer system, go that route because the interest rates and the borrowing will be much lower than a public offering because the Fairfield joint water has no history. They have no experience. But we've got to get a specific project in place. It's not just the wastewater treatment plan, it's gonna have to be a pump station here or lines there or something. So we will talk with our engineers as the, as the design goes forward on the plan itself to see if there's a specific project that can be broken out that we can use those funds to apply for.
Okay, so we can work on that then. And it was brought up, and I think I had asked you this before, do we have a specific grants writer and we do not?
No, ma'am. We have somebody that manages the paperwork and the financial side of it in the finance office, but the Sheriff's Department will write this grant and any department, the, the director or the staff in the Recreation Department will write a PARD grant or any other kind of grant like that. EMS writes their own grant, so we don't have anybody specifically dedicated to writing grants. But we do have somebody that manages the paperwork and makes sure the financial part of it's done right.
Okay, all right. I'm done.
I just want to repeat what the rest of council said. I appreciate during the storm, everybody, I hate to name people because I would forget, but Sheriff's Department, EMS, 911, Lyman, Public Works, everybody that was critical in making sure that we got through this storm. I appreciate each and every one of you. I would just tell people, don't wait for a big storm to come before you check your chainsaw to make sure it works, because I realized mine wouldn't work. But just thank everyone that helped out during the storm. Second thing is Rock Around the Clock this weekend was a great event. Chamber of Commerce did a great job. All the volunteers that helped with the chamber, great job. I think it was a great event and a lot of people came out for it, so I think it was great. Last thing, I think everybody's aware of a lady named Leon Tanner. Leon Tanner contacted me from the fair and there's some kind of booth at the fair that represents each different county in South Carolina. And when she got there, there was, and nobody to blame because I don't think we were made aware of it, but there was no items there on the stand that represented Fairfield County. She wanted to make sure that Fairfield County was represented. She contacted me immediately. I got her in touch with the chamber. I don't know if she reached out to administration or not, but Mr. Pullen was able to grab some things and get them to her so she could put them on display at the state fair in Columbia. And I just want to say I appreciate her because it's people like her that, that want to promote Fairfield County in a good light. And when, immediately when she saw that we were not being represented, she wanted to make sure that we were. So I just want to say thank you to her as well.
I have one more thing.
Yes, Ms. Wrenge.
I don't know who got the nothing but cakes to the Rock Around the Clock, but they're good. Thank you.
Any other council members? We don't have, or there's, there is no executive session this evening, so I entertain a motion. It's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero, we are now adjourned.